Go live as we're working, right? Yeah, okay. All right. So I'm going to record so I can go. Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September eighth, two thousand and twenty Committee of the Whole Meeting for Lake Bluff School District sixty-five. Our board members and members of the district administrative team are participating in a hybrid meeting as there is currently a requirement of group sizes in an effort to limit the spread of COVID nineteen. As a public body, the Lake Bluff Board of Education is subject to the Illinois Open Meeting Act. Prior to this meeting, a public announcement was posted on our website announcing various participation options, including asking questions ahead of the meeting using a Google form. While the requirements of the Open Meeting Act have been relaxed during the global pandemic, the members of this Board of Education take their responsibilities as board members, who are responsible to the public, no less seriously. Leanne, could you please call the roll?
Hag.
Present.
Duran.
Present.
Hill.
Present.
Barry.
Present.
Marsen. Don Marsen.
Unmute.
Present.
Shallow, present. Julie Gotchall at Eppington today.
All right, so we have a quorum and we can begin. If we all look over Shelley's shoulder to the American flag, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation under God. Thank you. We... Shelley, do we have any public comment waiting or to be read?
No, we have no public comment tonight.
Okay. I will ask again at the end of the meeting, if anybody would like to offer a public comment. I offer, we offer in every meeting, the opportunity for board members to add a brief discussion item for tonight or to add an agenda item for a future meeting. If anybody would like to offer something, please do so now, or you can always email myself or Dr. Lee Alley with suggestions for a agenda item or discussion item. If nobody has any, I would like to recommend on a fairly soon agenda that we have a conversation about organizing a board committee to work with Dr. Lee Alley to develop the tool by which she will be evaluated. She's brand new, she deserves to have her own evaluation system that she agrees to, and we all need to get that moving because we need to give her interim feedback before her formal review in January, February.
February, yeah.
Yeah. So we need to, we owe that, we owe her that, we have that responsibility to her to get her some kind of feedback prior to that as well. So I would like to have that on an agenda in an upcoming meeting to get a few people on board with that. I would also suggest that we schedule an agenda item having to do with a discussion on equity, how we incorporate that into our board working, how we work it into our administration, how we work it into the classroom, and what is the role of equity in Lake Bluff. Not sure what that means, but it can take a lot of different directions, but it's something that we specifically, we hired Lisa to do, and she should lead us through that. So at some point, we need to add that. Don't know if anybody else has any ideas, but if not, we can move on. The President's Report, that's me. I'm just going to remind everybody, as I have for the past few months, about the upcoming election for school board. The elections are in April of two thousand and twenty-one. The paperwork to be able to run for school board is due in December of two thousand and twenty, so only in a couple of months. We have four openings that will be opening up for board members, and I would like to encourage the community to consider running for school board. It's interesting and meaningful work. I am, and I'm sure other board members will be willing to talk to anybody out there who is interested or curious and wants to learn more. Our contact information is on our website. There's also links on our school website to the Illinois Association of School Boards has some information out there about what it takes to become a school board member and what is involved. So please consider and reach out to us to discuss if you would like to learn more. Discussions and presentation, we're going to move to Craig Seepko at White and Company. Craig, are you leading this or is it one of your coworkers?
I get the dubious honor of teeing it off for my team. So Dr. Lee Alley and members of the Board of Education, thank you very much for having us here today. It's been a while, always nice to see all of you, some new faces, some familiar faces for sure. But I am not going to spend a lot of time talking. What I'd like to do is introduce the two gentlemen that are with me today, friends and colleagues from White and Company, our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing department. The gentleman in the red shirt there, Sadesh Saref, he is the Director of our MEP Division, and he's one of our co-presenters today. Along with him today is Mr. Don Hardigan, who many of you will remember from the work that we did over at the elementary school. And together they co-authored a small white paper that we did with regards to indoor air quality and some potential improvements and options that Board of Educations and school districts in particular may have in this COVID era to to improve the indoor air quality of each one of their buildings. So we gave you a copy of that, I think you have that. And then on top of that, we also sent out a PDF copy of the presentation that these two gentlemen are going to be giving today. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Sadesh. And, oh, I got to grab the screen, don't I? I am going to-
Sadesh, are you in Hawaii or are you just playing with us?
It's just one of those things.
Looks beautiful.
I think Don is going to start, Don.
Okay, so here we go. Can you, can you all see the full screen or is that just a?
It's just a half screen. You got the-
Got the half screen?
First page in the start of the second.
Yeah, I can, there we go, how's that?
There we go.
All right, let's get this, let's get this thing going.
All righty, well, good evening, everybody, thank you for your time. Tonight, we're going to talk briefly at a high level, not to get too technical, about the conversation with the COVID nineteen and how it pertains to our HVAC design and how we can improve the existing systems that we have now to help mitigate lower the risk. HVAC design is a big part of it because we all have learned, I think, over the last few months that airborne contaminants is a major contributor to having the COVID virus being transmitted. So we're going to go through a couple of slides here. The first is going to be, we're going to talk a little bit about ASHRAI. ASHRAI, for those of you who are not familiar, stands for American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, and and Air Conditioning Engineering. It is an organization that's been around for a hundred-plus years, who have a lot of research behind them, and we're going to talk about their position. We're going to talk about a high-level summary of our five mitigation methods. And then we're going to talk a little bit specifically about the technology that we know about that can help mitigate those risks. And at the end of this, we'd be obviously welcome to any questions. ASHRAI came out with a paper in the middle of April, when everything started getting pretty intense. And what they're trying to do is trying to help the healthcare industry determine how to best deal with the airborne contaminants. And what they call it, aerosols. Aerosols are particulates that would be airborne and how you can mitigate it. The little diagram you see is somebody in a hospital bed and how it all transmits. And it basically comes down to that they found that the virus can become airborne for a certain amount of time. How much time that is, everybody has studies out there, but it does get airborne for a potential amount of time. And then the virus falls to surface. And that's where people touch things and everybody sanitizes everything. So ASHRAI is trying to focus on the aerosol portion of that. And so the summary of our white paper focused on the five methods to the indoor air viruses. That's increased outdoor, outside air ventilation, improve the particulate filtration, and that trapping the particulates in the filters. Adding ultraviolet UV lamps, this is very common in hospitals and healthcare facilities, especially for systems that have to treat and serve the operating room. And of course, we have number four, the electronic air cleaners. One of them is the bipolar ionization. And another one is controlling humidity because what ASHRAI and everybody has found that the virus and bacteria of all kinds, they thrive whether it's really dry or very humid. And we want to be in that happy medium. And really, if you think about it, the operating rooms in the hospitals, those are probably designed to be the cleaners and the clean rooms, right? And it's more than just HVAC. It's the positioning of the tables, it's the doors, the pathways, and everything is designed to kind of get that air to sweep through. And it's carefully designed. Unfortunately, we don't have operating rooms in all of our facilities and the commercials buildings, but we're going to aim to try to get there. So the next slide is a diagrammatic version of the summary that we talked about. And these are all, these five methods that Sadesh and I are talking about, these are all, these are all one bullet, one, you know, strategy in trying to knock this virus out. The key is trying to find out what gives us the best effectiveness for the amount of money that we can, and the times we can upgrade our systems. And we're finding that the bipolar ionization air cleaners can purify the air and particulates. And it seems to us to be pretty effective. There's a few companies out there that are pretty reputable, and we feel that it's pretty effective. I think in fact, we have installed it in our office in Dalian. Of course, you see on that diagram, the other methods, bringing in more outside air. Studies have shown that being outside is good preventative for transmitting, preventing transmission of the virus. And also the humidifiers and particulate filters. We're finding, if we have a MERV twelve, thirteen, fourteen, the MERV number kind of gives you the effectiveness of getting the smaller particulates trapped in the air handling and the HVAC systems. So there's a lot of details. What we have to do, what Sadesh and I do and our team, is try to identify what methods are best for each system so we don't, you know, cause other problems somewhere else. The last thing we want to do is put in some sort of filter, big hefty filter, and then find out everybody's too hot or too cold because we've created another problem. So we've got to be careful, and I think ASHRAI really pointed that out too. We've got to make sure that we don't accidentally create other problems.
Well, let's stay on this slide.
So I think that-
Yeah, let's stay on that slide. Just wanted to point out a couple of things on this, on this slide is, one of the things we could do with these bipolar, now as Don said, we vetted basically all the different things that we have talked about. Now, the bringing in the fresh air and, you know, using the better filtration and humidification stuff. But we were basically trying to hone, and when we were doing our work in our offices and trying to see what the best thing we can do for our particular space was what is something that has the less, the best impact on the indoor air quality? The, probably not the least cost, but it was basically the more, you know, most effective with the best cost. And we felt that the bipolar ionization provides that satisfaction to our satisfaction based on the research that has been done on these, on these units that we can really address. It's not only the COVID nineteen, but all the other viruses. You know, one of the things we see in schools a lot is during the winter months when the humidity, because of humidity and other issues, a lot of the flu viruses and stuff are really active during the winter months. And it's because, you know, kids get sick somewhere and then they spread it very easily among other kids. So this kind of technology that we are talking about, the bipolar ionization, really helps with not only the COVID nineteen, but all other viruses. So it will not only improve the things against COVID, but it also helps with all the regular flu symptoms. We can move on to the next slide now. Greg? Yeah, so if you see this, this is one of the, one of the units, and we have, you know, multiple of these units in our, in our office. So basically, what a bipolar ionization does is it has lamps that you can see in there, like five or six lamps in that unit. And as air hits the lamp, it basically generates positive and negative ions. So when the positive and negative ions, they come out, basically now, all the oxygen ions, basically they have, there's a free radical out there. So the free radicals, they move out in the space, and somebody is, when somebody is sneezing, somebody is coughing, talking loudly, and droplets of air that come, droplets of water that come from somebody's mouth, somebody's nose, they basically are in the space. So all these free radicals that are coming, that are coming out of these lamps basically attract them, they neutralize them. And some of them, they get basically, stay in the air, they come back into the unit, they get picked up by the filters. Most of them, about ninety percent of them, get neutralized and drop down to the floor. So, and then when you come in, the cleaning crews come in the evening, they vacuum it off, you're basically done. Most of the, most of these the viruses are really small particles. In the first slide that Greg, that Don showed you, in which he was talking about the size of the micron, size of the particles, the smallest particles are the ones that are the virus. The viruses are the smallest particles, and these are the ones that are the most difficulty going through the normal filters. We can go through some high-efficiency filters, they call HEPA filters, ninety-nine point nine percent efficient. They can pick up those, those smallest particles, but most of the regular filters that we use for HVAC are not very good with those filters. So that's why having an electronic air cleaner is, in our opinion, a very good, a very solid solution for, for ensuring that we have a good, you know, environment. They even claim, we don't know the substance, a lot of these people may claim, they make, they say that the air is as good as a mountain air. There are some links I can share with you that will show you how the process actually works. And they claim that the, the level of purity they get out of this air is almost as good as mountain air. But, but we located from, more from, how does it work on particulates like aerosols and, you know, and dust and VOCs, you know, you have, you know, we have a lot of organic compounds that are off-gassing of, you know, furnitures and carpets and paints and everything. So it works against those, it works against particulate matter. So that's, from that perspective, we feel that this is a good product. Now, this product can be put in the rooftop units that you have in multiple schools, in both the schools. You can put them in air handling units, you can put them in ductwork, you can put them in unit ventilators, all kind of equipment. It has to be a equipment that is forced air. So if, as long as you can create air through a fan, you can put this in for, as soon as the air hits these, these lamps, they start generating these ions that come into the space. And one of the biggest things I forgot to mention was, they, the reason we like this so much is because it comes into the space and acts on, acts on viruses and bacteria. There are other technologies out there, like the UV technology. It has to wait for the air to come back to it in the air handling unit. But there are always certain particles that will, are so small that will not even travel with the air and come back to the unit. So those will not get neutralized, but because of this technology, this technology works in the space itself. So that's basically why we feel that this is a really, really good product or a technology that can help with really cleaning the air and getting it disinfected and, and addressing the major problem that we have now and the long-term problem with regular flu viruses. Go to the next slide. Based on the systems that you have in the, in the school, at both the schools, elementary school and the middle school, we did a quick cost estimate based on the equipment that you have. At the elementary school, you have basically five rooftop units that does the entire school. The middle school is a little bit more complex. It's got, you know, a variety of, it's got rooftops, it's got air handlers, it's got unit ventilators, you've got fan coils, all sorts of, sort of equipment in that school. So we basically didn't estimate of the total installed cost. So there's a range of dollars that we have provided in here. Also, we gave you some idea of how much time it would take for us to do if the board approved this, you know, from the point that you approve it. It's an estimated eight months process if we go through the proper, in the design documentation, building, shop trying, manufacturing, you know, installation, the whole process. If there are certain steps that can be stopped because, that can be eliminated, like direct procurement, then we can save some time on it. But that's basically the timeframe we found. It was a little bit, it was actually a lot better in the beginning, but we know that a lot of people are going for these products now, so the anticipated manufacturing times have gone up from, anywhere from three to four weeks in the beginning to six to eight to ten weeks now. So they're in demand a lot right now, but we really feel that that is, it's a good technology, and we stand behind this technology. We have really worked, and we worked a couple, like Don mentioned, we worked with a couple of manufacturers. One we put in our office, and then the other one we have used at other school districts, like Stevenson High School. And so we feel very comfortable with these products. So that's pretty much what we had to share with you guys. If you guys have any questions, please, you know, we would love to hear them and, you know, see if we can answer those to your satisfaction.
I have a question, my name is John Mars, and I have a question. Is there any scientific data, research done on these, this equipment that indicates its, you know, how well it works, what the mitigation is?
The technology behind the, is about forty years old. So there is, there is, that, there is research that has been done on this. I can dig up something then and send it to you if you are, if you're interested. The tech, basic technology behind the ISH, it's basically, you know, if you look at some of the reading material that I even sent you this part of the slide, if you see, it's really what happens, and they're basically trying to recreate through, through the lamps, what is happening naturally. So what happens naturally is we have ozone layers in there and basically it gives out ions. And that's how it, why is the outside air so clean? It's because of the ions that are going outside. So we're trying to recreate, because we're living in inside environments, and we don't get benefit of the outside, that is why we have to recreate and do these technologies, recreate this stuff to create that same environment indoors. So basically, what's happening in outdoors, that's basically what's happening. But I can, I can provide you some information on that.
Especially if it's from different manufacturers, I'm not sure, is this one manufacturer?
Yeah, John, I just, as a matter of fact, today, the manufacturer that we installed in our office produced and released a, I think it was a one-page report that demonstrated that their product was like ninety-nine point nine percent effective on COVID nineteen, specifically for COVID. Because I'm sure there was a lot of people asking the same question. I think I shared it with our team internally, but I'm sure we'll be happy to send that to you all.
And that leads to my second question, which is really more a cost-benefit question. If you, let's just make the assumption that we'll start with the number at level one hundred. You know, by having everyone wear a mask, you reduce the chances of transmission down, let's say, to eighty. On top of that, if they washed their hands, et cetera, maybe it's down to sixty. You distance people, maybe down fifty percent chance of getting it. So, you know, are we potentially spending three hundred thousand dollars to protect the last ten percent? I don't know if you can answer that question, but that's, it's an important question because we all know that vaccines are on the way. This is more, I view this more or less as not a long-term solution. Colds are, you're never going to suppress colds, their viruses are going to be around forever. Kids are not in school eight hours, only but eight hours a day, they go home, there's no protection at home. So, you know, if we were to decide to do this, it's quite, it's quite an expense for the taxpayers, and I want to make certain that, that the cost benefit is there for us and for the protection of the kids. I don't know if anybody can answer that question, but-
I mean, let me, let me try, I mean, we have, we have shown you the other mitigation methods, right? So the first mitigation method was to bring in fresh air. So if you look at, if you look at the report, we have always talked about what is the advantages of doing something and what is the disadvantage of doing something. A lot of people are talking about, a lot of people are talking about, let's bring in more fresh air. Fresh air is good from outside, let's bring more of it inside. The problem with that is, is that as you're bringing in more fresh air, you're bringing in more unconditioned air during summer, more hotter and humid air into the building. During the winter, you're building more colder and drier air. So now you have to work on it, you have to provide, you know, during the summer, you have to have larger cooling equipment to cool that air down. During the winter, you have to have larger heating equipment to heat that air up. And then you need some more means of, you know, you know, humidifying that. So that's, that, that, that's a downside to that, even though, even though the upside is bring more fresh air. It's very simple, right? But the downside is, it's going to take a lot more money now to heat and to, to heat and cool that outside air, which is, you know, more than what was planned in the U. Second one was the, for example, the particulate filters. You can get, you can get HEPA filters, ninety-nine point nine percent filters in your building, and they can do a pretty good job of removing most of, most if not all of your contaminants in the space. The problem with those is, they have a very high pressure drop. So if you're, if you had a rooftop that was giving you thousand CFM, now it will only give you five hundred CFM because now you are pushing your, it's, now you're putting this big filter across it that is basically, the fan is only sized, you know, for a small pressure drop. The moment you put the bigger filters in there, you're going to have, you can go up to MERV thirteen, I think we can, easily with ease, but for the smallest particles that are these, you know, the viruses that are like point three microns, that will go right through a MERV thirteen, it will not, above fifteen, more sixteen. And then higher level of filtration can stop those. But then you basically, you're basically not able, you're not able to basically do generate the amount of air that you need to cool and heat the space. So like I said, there are other ways to get around it. The ultraviolet lamps has the kind of the same cost, like we have, maybe a little bit less, but they last a lot, shorter, they have a shorter lifespan. They're more fragile, so that's the downside of the ultraviolet lamp, otherwise they work very well also. Humidity, yes.
Sadesh, this is Richard Hag. Life cycle of these units, and what kind of maintenance costs are you looking?
So, okay, so the maintenance cost of these units, basically for the bipolar ionization, the lamps will last two years if you run them continuously day and night. If you are running them eight hours, nine hours a day, you probably last about three years. And then you have to replace the lamps on the unit. Other than that, there is really no other maintenance. And the good thing about these bipolar ionization, they use very little power. You know, very, very little power they use, and they just need to have air. So as long as the air is blowing at them, that's all they need. So very little maintenance, and like I said, between two and three years, depending upon usage. If you're using it twenty-four seven, then two years. If you're using it eight to ten hours a day, then it's about maybe three years, so.
Yeah, I, but don't get me wrong, I like to get back to my original questions, I don't think it's been answered yet. I, I, I'm not disagreeing that the ionization process is probably the best for us. What I need to understand better is, if we can use these other mitigation devices, including masks and MERV thirteen filters, et cetera, are we going to be spending a hundred and thirty thousand dollars or whatever, it ended up three hundred thousand dollars, to get the last ten percent? I mean, that's really, it's a cost-benefit question. If we can take care of seventy percent with the better filters, making sure masks are worn, improved filtration, all that other stuff, then the question becomes, do we want to spend three hundred thousand dollars? Then the question becomes, do we want to spend three hundred thousand dollars to, to protect the twenty or thirty, whatever that ends up being? I'm not sure what that is. I don't know whether anyone can answer that question, but that's a question from a taxpayer's perspective, I think we have to address.
John, I think, I think we get different answers from people like you and me versus parents of the kids.
Well, you're probably right, no question. But they pay taxes too. So I'm, I mean, I'm not forming, I'm, I'm not presenting my own personal opinion here. I just think. It needs to be addressed and we need to determine whether in fact the investment is one we feel. Is, is essential, let's say, to mitigate the virus even further. I mean, we could, you know, throw, we could be spending three hundred thousand dollars to get the last five percent, which really won't have any effect at all. I mean, that's theoretical, or maybe it's a more important. I don't know. I, I can't answer the question. I'm just posing.
I can, let me try another way. I mean, Mark White, you know, our CEO, I mean, I talked to him. I said, so Mark. What is your motivation to do this? Because I, in the beginning, I said in our office, let's put the higher, higher level filtration for next four months and five months and. And we found that people were very reluctant to come back to the office. They, once we put these in, people started coming. They felt we did something which was tangible. That was what we, our people felt. The other thing I forgot completely mentioned was that we have these devices that monitor the air quality now in our offices. And they, and we put them and that was another day, it was like fifteen hundred dollars each unit. It's like we put three of them, one, two in the Chicago. One in the Chicago office, two in the Dalian office. And, and people come in the office, they see, look at these things, they see how our indoor air quality is doing and they're like, wow, this is great. I'm, you know, so I think it's more, maybe, maybe it's more in the people's heads that says, okay, you know what? I think, I think we got something tangible here and makes them feel more comfortable. But, you know, and it does, you know, make, make that sense. So I don't know if that, that, that helps.
John, if I may just add on, on, on to that. It's, it's definitely something that we'll take a look at. I agree with you. It's probably not something. At least in, in the, the, the school white papers that we've seen, that is. Readily available, but perhaps we could look at, you know, from the hospital industry and healthcare industry. Where this stuff is used more readily. They might have more information with regards to that to answer your question. It's, it's relatively, I would say it's relatively new for schools. And it's just brought on because of the, the whole COVID thing. So it's a little bit more research that we need to do. And we, if we could find it, we will definitely share it with you.
Are there one, one last thing? Are there any, I know New York City, I think mandated Merv thirteen filters in their school system. Are there any large? School systems across the country that have installed this and are there any experiences that you can relay back to us regarding those installations?
We have not, I have not heard of other, this schools, districts that have put them on outside Illinois. I mean, we have put them in. Like I said, the Stevenson school, schools have them. We actually provided them before the COVID began, right, Doc?
Yeah.
Last year, they, they were, they were, they were kind of concerned about, you know, other viruses and bacterias. So we actually, you know, through some of the products that we had provided in the previous phase of work, we actually use them. And now in the second phase, the one that we're doing now, we are providing them also. So honestly, it is easier and cheaper to provide them in the beginning if you had a. Retrofitting is always a little bit more pricey, so that's why we feel that, you know, that's maybe.
You know, the only comment I'll add to that is. First thing I would try to remember was all the comments. So UV lamps primarily historically have been used in healthcare hospitals. That's because you have the air flowing all the time and these rooms are designed such that the air. Has a entering point and a leaving point where it allows to sweep up everything.
Well, is that negative pressures?
It, right. It's so a lot of these, you know, before this whole COVID episodes has begun. Some people put this in, it's kind of a novelty item, right? But now the mindset of everybody is changed. And nobody, I don't think, I don't think the manufacturers are going to guarantee anything. It's going to come down to a certain level. It's just another, like I said, strategy to try to help mitigate the risk. The bipolar ionization, when the, when the work for food processing plant that I've worked in the past. That's where this, that technology has been used. They try to make sure that the, the, obviously the food that we eat that they manufacture. They want it to be as clean as possible bipolar is used in there because they know that that will clean out the air a little bit better. You don't have that whole sweeping mechanism like you do in hospitals. So it's just like Trudas said, it's a, I don't want to say psychological advantage, but. If, if we use each one of these methods to its entirety, you know. It, it's going to lower the risk even more and more and more. Our job here is to try to figure out what gives us the best bang for the buck. We'll get without harming something else. So that, it's, it's a tricky question, you know, but I don't think anybody has the answer. But it's certainly something that we are looking at and I think the technology is going to catch up and we're going to figure it out eventually.
I would also be interested in understanding a little better about what other schools nationally are doing. I, I haven't heard. This recommendation made at the federal level, not that that's to be expected, but CDC, I don't think is recommended it. But if, if other major school systems have lashed on any research or any evidence or any data that indicates this. Increases the mitigation levels to a point where the value is worthwhile, because we are talking about a pretty significant investment here. And it's, and, you know, you don't have to defend the various options. I believe you. The question I really have is, you know, how, how much bang are we going to get for the buck really?
I appreciate that, John, and I also appreciate the board allowing us to bring some ideas. Because I think ever since this started, that's the goal of the administrative team, is to just mitigate risk down to the lowest level. And I do recognize that the situation is continuously changing. We may have a vaccine. Soon, but I think we all recognize that there will probably be issues with that regarding distribution and timelines. And we could be in this situation for a long time. And I think some of the, one of the things that was really interesting to me when Jay brought this idea was that. Indoor air quality is, has been an issue in schools for a long time. And we know that the quality of the air has a lot to do with a child's ability to focus, a teacher's ability to focus. You know, supporting us with even other kind of illnesses that can travel really quickly. You know, our ability to bring back more students to school will depend on not only. How much risk mitigation we can engage in, but also when our guide, when our guidelines are relaxed and they will be relaxed at some point. You know, we're going to be able to bring more kids into the school, but that will not relax, I don't think, the anxiety. That a lot of people feel around whether or not we're doing absolutely everything we can to make sure that everyone is safe. So, but I do appreciate your questions. And I think we can get some more information on other school systems who, that may have started some work like this. And, and see if we can bring you some more information.
And any data, any scientific research data that's out there, I, I would personally like to take a look at.
I would agree with that. I'd also like to, I'm curious what parents in the school would think. I don't know. I'm a parent in the school and I don't know what my thoughts are and, you know, it's also new, but I hear you, John, on. You know, we're talking about at the very earliest with an eight month lead time, you know, May, June, before this would even be in, in our building. So we're looking at the next school year. We know vaccines on the way, at least for, for coronavirus, but I, I'm wondering what is this a, and teachers too. Is this something that teachers and parents are worried about or are worries a little less about air filtration? I don't know the answer to that, but it might be nice as we're trying to make a decision to have that piece of data as well.
I have a question about the timeline.
Go ahead, Liam.
I have a question about the timeline for this. I can see where this would be very helpful in the short term. And it's sort of frustrating that even if we decided to do it, we're eight months out from implementation. And I know there was a comment about maybe being able to do something with that. I'm curious what's possible. And given that the equipment is in short supply, high demand. You know, what could we do?
Well, the reason the timeline is long is because of the procurement process. Because you can only up to like over the fifty thousand is the limit that you don't have to do competitive bidding and design. So that's the process, that, that, the actual installation. I mean, we got it in our office. I think in, in June, we ordered it and by middle of July, we, we had them installed in our office. Because we didn't have to go through this whole process of, you know, competitive bidding and finding the low bidder and going through the. So that whole process, that's what makes that process long. The actual, you know.
Yeah, I was able to see that, the process, I was able to read, you know, your presentation that it was the bidding process. I guess, Dr. Leal, I'm asking you, what is possible or Jay, in terms of the bidding process? If we were to decide we wanted to do it.
I don't think that, so the bidding process is a legal requirement that really can only be. Circumvented in the event of an emergency situation. Most bids, I don't think that's, I wouldn't expect the bidding process to take eight weeks. I think it's. A conservative estimate. I mean, it will definitely add some time because you need to publish the bid and collect all the bids and. See who has the lowest bidder and then move and move from there. To the extent you can do some things concurrently, you may be able to shave some time off of it, but I wouldn't do this project without a competitive bid.
The, the governor's emergency declaration does not allow us to circumvent that, that routine, I assume.
I'd have to ask our attorneys about that. I don't.
I'm not saying we should. I just think we need to know the answer to that if we can find out. But I've got, I've got several questions that I want to ask as well. Did you know, if you wanted to make a point, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's okay. I just, I guess I wanted to just say that by presenting this, I didn't. You know, the, the message is not that our buildings are unsafe. One, you know, we are doing, taking all the other mitigation strategies into account. We're increasing our airflow, increasing our filtration. Controlling humidity and things like that. You know, this was brought as a, in response to a question, you know, if you could do anything you wanted to. What would you do? Because this is a known mitigation strategy that's effective. And some of the things that were attractive about it were that it's flexible and can be used in different. All the different air handling environments that we have in our schools, because one school is significantly older than the other. And I think there was some concern that the filtration wasn't going to be the same. This could be retrofitted into a modern air system. As well as one from the nineteen fifties. And then also the fact that it just improves our indoor air quality in general, which is something. That is a, is a benefit to, to students and staff, you know, going forward. Regardless of whether we have a COVID nineteen issue. And then also the fact that you can install measurement devices and actually measure indoor quality, air quality to get results. So those were some of the reasons why we were looking at this. But I, I agree, and I don't know that we'll ever be able to get to a point where we can. Scientifically say what percentage we're mitigating, you know, I think it's. I'd like to your point, John, I think we're doing everything we can and we may have, by doing all these things, eliminated eighty percent of the risk and then. You know, it's just a judgment if it's worth spending the extra money to, to get to the zero percent or the ten percent. And we'll definitely look for the data, but I'm not sure that it exists. That was all I'd say.
So I, I have a lot of the same kinds of questions as John. I, I, and you just, Jay, you just said that it may not exist, but I would have loved to see, maybe that we can get something like this. After the fact, but a, a chart perhaps that compares all these different mitigation strategies. That does present the pro, the benefits and the, the. Possible downside to each one of them as well as the percent reduction if we have any sense, if, if like somebody said that they. There's been research that suggests that the bipolar ionization can take care of some high percentage of the. COVID nineteen virus, but if we have any data like that, that's comparable between these different mitigation strategies. Just to be clear, you, the, the white recommendation is bipolar ionization, right? It's not the other things that were listed?
No, no, no. Basically, we have the, the, the report that we have that you have seen. It talks about all the, talks about all the mitigation. We just presented the one today. We have the white, the white report has basically all five. We feel that all five are very important. So if you look at them and then we talk about each one, within each one of them, we talk about the advantages and the disadvantages. So when you, if you read that report, it's a three page, it's just a three page white paper, you will see that we have talked about all of them. And so we can do.
I did read that.
One, we can do the all, or we can do a hybrid of one and, and.
So I, I, I did read that and like John, I'm, I'm looking for something that allows me to. Compare numerically between these different. Options. And if I stack them, if I use A and B, I get this much benefit, or if I use A, B and C, I get this much benefit. Because I don't know that we're ever going to get the, the cost benefit analysis that John's dreaming of. But if we can get some numbers attached to some of this stuff to compare, it would make our job as, as. Fiduciary guardians of district money a, a lot easier, more justifiable. To make it, to make a tough decision involving a lot of, spending a lot of money we don't necessarily have. I, I, I have a question that I don't know if you'll be able to answer at all either, but if you can quantify. Does, like, I know nothing about HVAC other than my home system. And I know that I was warned against using higher Merv filters in my home system because it'll shorten the life of my system. Because it, it has to work harder. I wonder if any of these systems shorten the life of some of the equipment we have and should we be concerned about that? I don't necessarily need an answer to that, but I, right now, but it's something I want to find out more about. What else?
Don, you want, you want to take it?
Yeah. First, there is a table, a chart. By a couple of manufacturers who. Who show the differences between all the technologies. There's even more stuff out there. And the pros and cons of everything. And of course, when you're selling this stuff, yours is better than the next technologies, right? I mean, that, that, that's how they're going to bill it. And our job to kind of cut through the chatter and, and try to see what really works and what has adverse effects. That's a general statement. Nobody that I know of will say that if you use, you know, options two and three. Will give you eighty five percent effectiveness and oh, one and five and three would, and, and it will give you. Every, every, every method has a dollar cost assigned to it. It has a maintenance cost to cycle, energy cost to side to it. And there's not obviously a perfect situation. Specifically. Bipolar ionization is, they do, we do have a paper, like I said, from one of the manufacturers who, who has a study on it. So to my knowledge, there is no. We're looking for a, a, a rating, a chat or effectiveness rating for each one. And unfortunately, I don't, we don't know. The industry is trying to catch up to all this. All we know is that we know some of these to some degree or another have, have a good, better impact or not. I mean, I think Trudas and I would agree that putting in a humidifier is probably a good idea. Is it more effective than bipolar ionization or the UV light? Probably not. I think that's probably our opinion. Everybody's going to have different opinions. Increasing outside air, it seems to be, everybody wants to do it. And it's easy to do, just open up a damper, turn on the fan higher and. But, but then some people are going to be sweating or, or getting cold. It starts the move rating, going a higher move rating. What, what Trudas said before was the pressure drop, the higher the move rating, the higher the pressure drop, the more resistance. That that, that that fan is going to see. And all it means is that the fan has to work harder to get the air to the space. Is it going to lessen the life of the fan? It's not like you're, you're somebody, you know, pulling on, on the belt. I think I never really heard it lowering the life. It will make the, maybe the energy go up a little bit more. But there's, I, there's not, there's not much downside to increasing efficiency of a filter, if you can fit it in.
I, I would ask. A lot of their, Mark, a lot of their, your rooftops that we have worked on recently, they already have MERV thirteen filters, right? The ones at the elementary school that you put, those are, those ones already have the MERV thirteen filters in already, so we already know that. But you could not just take a unit that had a MERV seven filter and put a MERV thirteen filter, thirteen, I think you could put in. But anything more than that, you just can't put it because it's just going to, you're just going to drop the amount of air coming through the unit drastically, so.
Yeah. I, one, one thing I might recommend, and we kind of already danced around it a little bit earlier, is that Dr. Leal and Jay, if you, if you guys know people at Stevenson who can report, could, could fill you in on their experience with, with this system? And, you know, learn a little bit about it from firsthand, that would be interesting to learn about. The other thing I just want to talk, say to, to, you know, kind of to, to John's, in response to what John is talking about, like the cost for that extra five percent, or whatever the other number is that we're, you know, hopefully trying to, to understand better. And I, 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 I think, like, some, somebody did say parents might feel differently about that, that evaluation because if your child is in that five percent that we didn't pay to keep, or your coworker, another teacher or administrator is in that five percent that we didn't spend the money to keep somebody healthy, and, you know, who knows what might happen? We might think about it differently, or they might think about it differently. And I'm not making an argument for or against spending the money, but I, I'm making, I'm pointing out that this is not simply a cost benefit analysis, it's a bit of an ethical moral conversation as well. That's all I got.
I agree with what you're saying there, Mark. I mean, I think it's important for us to be physically responsible here, but it is, to me, more a question of, will these actually work? And I'd just like to clarify from White, if you're saying that you don't know, or the data doesn't exist. Because I think if that's the case, then we probably don't need to wait on making a decision.
No, I don't think we are saying that they don't not work. I mean, they, the, the, if you read the theory behind it, I think it makes a lot of sense. It's basically, like I said earlier, basically all they're saying is they're trying to create an environment that is like outside because that's how, how air gets cleaned, purified outside. They're using the technology to clean the air inside the way na- nature naturally does it outside. That's, that, that, that's what, what they're saying. Now, we need to find the, the, the materials that, that, that back it up. But I can tell you by our experience that it has been in our office for three, four months, and we could tell the difference right away. We could feel that the air was, it was feeling, felt much fresher, and because we have the monitors, we can see the particular levels. Our PM levels, which are basically the particular matter, which is the small particles, it, it reads them, and we are always at like between zero and two. That's so very little, normally outside it could be ten, eleven, twelve. Inside, it's basically literally very zero to two, so it's definitely doing something. We know that, it's doing something, so the air feels good, the air feels fresher, but, you know, I don't have a silver bullet to show you, okay, this is perfectly, perfectly working, but we know that the technology, I think, there is some good science behind the technology. That's all I'm trying to say, and that's.
So scientifically, we're saying scientifically that it makes sense that these measures would work. But what I'm asking is, is there data out there that we should consider to, to back that up? Or is this so new, and the question of what to do in a school is so new, that there really isn't data? And we just need to make a decision based on what we think is probably a good idea?
I'm, like Dawn said, I'm sure there's data out there because this has been used, it's not, this is not a brand new technology. This is, this technology has existed for forty years. So we know that there is, but yes, I think we just need to find the data, Dawn, and that, do you agree?
Yeah, yeah, let, let me, let me clarify, this is proven technology, it does work. It shows, there's a video on YouTube, we'll send all this to, that, to show these bipolar ionization work and there's smoke in it. And after like thirty seconds, it all dissipates, it all goes away, it does work. It does improve the indoor air quality. I, I, I think the thing that nobody wants to define here, is they want to be able to have a monitor up, you know, on a, on a wall that says, you know, the virus level is zero, and all the, you know, we measure, I don't know of any technology that shows that, that the virus is not in the air because of this, you know what I mean? But, but like I said, that there is a paper by Atmosphere that we have in our office, that, that data study, it's a one-page study, we'll send it to that they, they claim that it's ninety-nine point nine percent pure, and that's the first one I've seen specifically talking about COVID nineteen. Everything else they talk about, bacteria, viruses, particulates VOC, and that is proven technology.
I like, I also like Andy's idea of just testing the water with parents. You know, I mean, the kids in school, again, I'm not arguing one way or the other, they're in school roughly eight hours a day. The rest wears sixteen hours a day, so the chances of them getting it outside of school is probably greater than inside of school. And those of you that live in Lake Bluff, see the kids on the weekends, they're, they're, they're pretty much together. So my question really just boils down to cost benefit more than anything outside. And if, if Jay feels, if we got money to spend, Jay feels we have the money to spend, there's no downside to putting this in. It's a benefit, obviously, the gears are going to be, there's going to be cleaner, people are going to be healthier, I mean, there's no, absolutely no downside. So it really becomes, for me, just a matter of not whether we do it or not, it's whether we can afford to do it.
Well, Jay's going to talk about his budget pretty soon, and he can perhaps enlighten us a little bit how we work something like this. Any other questions for the people from White? Thank you, guys, we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope we answered your question, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now Dr. Leal is going to give us an update on returning to school, return to learn.
Yes, thank you, I'm so happy to report that we are almost a week in. Day five was today with students, really so proud of our teachers and administrative team for all the work they did to get to, to today. Kindergarten started today, it was their first day, so it was really exciting, a little bit rainy and cold, but we were so happy to have them back. I think, you know, my update is pretty informal tonight, what we, what I really want to focus on is the fact that, you know, we, we bring you presentations like we just had because our goal is to be as conservative as we can possibly be with regard to safety and health. And so we talked about, we built a plan that we could bring as many students back as we can and make sure that everyone is as safe and healthy as they can be, and, and that we are adhering to the guidance that we have been given as strictly as possible. So I just want to reiterate that, you know, the goal of that presentation is the same as what we've been doing all summer, just looking for ways to keep everyone as healthy as we can. As you know, our goal is to be, be able to bring back as many students as we can, but kind of make sure that everyone is at least six feet apart. So we have some students in person, some students learning at home, and some students coming in and out. This definitely, having three different choices, has created some obstacles for us to overcome now that students are in. We definitely are experiencing some, some issues with tech, as many other school districts around the country started school today. We experienced some outages and Zoom and some other platforms that we use. And some of that was out of our control, some of it, you know, we've been working on in-house. Paul was on our, on our meeting for a little while, Paul Sanchez has been working really hard, our tech manager, a brand new tech manager, along with our tech facilitators in each building, to try to address as many issues as we can possibly address for our community and teachers and students, to make this as seamless as possible. Again, we've tried to work through some facilities challenges, we have absolutely had some students who haven't been feeling well at school, and we have had to send them and their siblings home. And when we do that, we have to relocate that classroom and kind of move kids around and disinfect, and so we've been working through those procedures. But all of these pieces, along with arrival and dismissal, and making sure that everyone's staying as far apart as possible, keeping their masks on, all logistics that we're working on to make sure that everyone is safe. And, you know, our team is already thinking about the future and what, what we can do in order to bring back more students as soon as we possibly can. Again, our ability to bring back more kids will have to do with, you know, what the metrics are saying inside of our schools, how healthy everyone is, how healthy our community is in terms of outside of our school district, but within our zip code or within our county. And then it will also rely on the guidance that we get from the Illinois Department of Health and the Lake County Department of Health. It'll rely upon that being relaxed a little bit, because at this point, we are very much at capacity with as many students in the building as we can have, and adhering to that guidance as strictly as possible. So again, we have our five clock hours of instruction going on every day on remote learning. We definitely have some work that students need to do outside of the synchronous time, that they're either with us in school or doing work face to face at home. And our goal in Lake Bluff is to fill in any gaps that have happened, any kind of, you know, make up for any learning loss that's happened since the spring and keep pace with our curriculum, we want to make sure that all of our students are, are being as successful as they can possibly be and that we're differentiating for their needs. So again, I'm just really proud of our teachers, really proud of our staff, really thankful to our community for everyone kind of supporting us with symptom checks every day and, you know, reporting to Zoom sessions and making sure they're being engaged at home. So thankful to our parents who are at home supervising remote learning with us, those that are coming and, and, and participating in new arrival and dismissal procedures. And certainly thankful to everyone for maintaining those healthy habits outside of the school building so that we can continue to do this for as long as possible and hopefully expand as soon as we can.
Yes, can you clarify something for me? I had a parent ask me a question, and I thought I had the answer, I just wanted to clarify. So once the parents have decided that child will be in school, can they change their mind and take them into the remote mode?
So we have offered that option to parents, absolutely, because we have not only tried to keep our numbers down as low as possible, but we also do have a waiting list of families that would like to get in person that we haven't been able to accommodate. So we are really asking parents if they feel like the in-person experience is not working for them, that they let us know and, and we will make arrangements so that they can move to a remote learning at home, and we can move those families in who are on the waiting list. There aren't many, but we would like to accommodate them if, if it's not working out for some families. It's definitely much more challenging to bring kiddos into school and to make sure that we have spots and keep everyone as safely apart as possible and make sure that we don't exceed our capacity.
Mark, you're muted.
How did that happen? I didn't do that on purpose. Any other questions for Dr. Leal on, on that, that's all I was saying. So we will move on, and item seven C is Mr. Khan reviewing the twenty twenty-one tentative budget for us.
I know how much everyone enjoys my budget presentations, but tonight I figured I wouldn't go through the whole thing again. Really, not much has changed since last, since you last saw it. I'm still confident that we can have, I'm still budgeting for a, no change in fund balance, a balanced budget for next year. I would remind you that we added three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fund balance last year due to savings from the school closures. And there are still, we, there's still some things that are kind of on the margin, the FDA, or I'm sorry, the, at the FDA, the Department of Agriculture has extended their waiver for free and reduced lunch, the, the program that we use for the summer food service program to feed families this summer. So they've extended that through December, which means that we'll have the opportunity to be reimbursed for the free meals that we serve our families in need, which is a favorable impact to the budget that I have not incorporated yet. You know, there's still a few pluses and minuses, I may or may not budget for that, but I think, you know, that's one, one change that I thought was noteworthy. And, and then in terms of capital projects, if, you know, as we talked about this, any bipolar ionization technology is sort of the suspenders, the belt and suspenders, we already have the belt on. So whether or not we want to show out money for the suspenders is, is kind of the, the question, and that is, you know, as we said, it's an emotional decision, it's, it's also a moral decision and, and a cost benefit. Craig, I texted Craig, "Good job," and he said, "Stay tuned, there's, they're going to get some more data for us." So hopefully we have a little bit more concrete data to, to look at rather than just going with the gut. I'm fairly conservative, as you know, and I wouldn't want to spend that much money just based on a good feeling. So we're going to go, go out and look for a little bit more data. But I think, I think that, you know, some, a lot of places have done it, even outside of COVID, so I think it may be a, a nice thing to do in the long term for the community, and it's just a matter of, I think we can afford it, so, you know, we'll, we'll look at the data and, and kind of go from there. Okay. Also, this time of year is when I typically do long-term projections. I, given the total uncertainty, I didn't feel it was worth the time to do a long-term projection with lots of wildly different scenarios, so I may skip that this year. But I would like to point out that the CPI for next year is already set at two point three percent. So that will, barring any kind of legislation, which I don't anticipate, increase our tax revenue by two point three percent next year. And then if you asked me in March, you know, I think I, when I gave my doom and gloom forecast, I was looking at a zero percent CPI for the following year. It's currently tracking at about one percent and increasing, so we've got two point three percent next year, one percent plus hopefully for the following year. And, you know, tax collections continue to be strong, so I'm optimistic.
I would. Any questions for Mr. Khan?
I like the brevity.
I just appreciate Jay's done a lot of hard work, again, with our facilities crew. I've been running for this last week, and the buildings have looked great, and do appreciate lots of ideas that Jay's brought to the table to make sure everyone stays safe, so.
All right, our final discussion item has to do with the intergovernmental agreement with the Lake Bluff Library, and is it, Dr. Leal, are you going to talk us through that?
Yeah, absolutely, so that we're entering into year five of this intergovernmental agreement, which allows all the children in our schools, elementary and middle, to have access to the Lake Bluff Public Library system. Eric Bailey is on our call right now, if anyone has any questions for him. But I believe we've provided some information for you about usage. I, I would imagine that usage may have been impacted in the spring, could be impacted moving forward a little bit just due to some of the different procedures and processes the library has had to put in place to make sure that everyone stays safe. But they have been working on curbside delivery services and doing some virtual services, and they've been really, really creative about making sure that as much of their operations can maintain during this period as possible. So as we know, it's a very valuable service, a really valuable program that we provide to all of our children that kind of levels the playing field and make sure that everyone has what they need in order to participate fully in our curriculum and our programming. So I'm really excited about this partnership, glad to see it continuing and looking forward to working more with the library in the future.
Mark, you're muted.
How does it mute myself, mute me without doing anything? Anyways, it's, it's a thousand dollars, right? That's the, the total cost of it.
That's correct, and tonight is just discussion, we'll bring it back on September twenty-second for official approval.
We've seen this, how many years now, five? So we're pretty familiar with it, I think. Any questions, questions for Dr. Leal? I don't hear any. Is there any public comment, anybody waiting? I saw a few names in the waiting room, I don't know if anybody's interested in their comment to wrap up the meeting. I saw a few names in the waiting room. I don't know if anybody's interested in their comment to wrap up the meeting. I didn't see any hands up.
There are none, no hands up at this time and no public comment has been emailed in.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have anything they want to add as we close out? Thank you for all your hard work, Dr. Lee Alley. Thank you for your team's hard work getting the school year up and running. Thank you to all the teachers for for all your collaboration and hard work and parents and families for doing what it takes to help us all get through this together. Appreciate it. May have a motion to adjourn at eight 16 P M.
So moved. Second.
Leanne, could you please call the roll on that?
And you have to unmute yourself. Barry?
Yes.
Marzen?
Yes.
Charlo, yes. Hey?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Good night.
Hi.
See you guys.